I need a lawyer to figure this out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you don't need me. Well, what do you think, folks? I think we got seven o'clock. Should we go ahead and do it? All right. The special meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Okay. Chairperson Jim Sawtell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momarts.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton, Gullis Harden here, Mark Laces, Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese, Tom Ricker, Anthony Stewart.
Present.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Attorney Liz Cross.
Here.
Associate Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. First item is approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we get a motion to approve?
I will be approve the agenda.
Commissioner Momarts, second.
A second.
Commissioner Malia, those in favor. Motion's carried. Next item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent agenda? Doesn't appear that way. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. And we have approval of the June 16, 2015 minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And does anybody have any changes?
Yes, yes and no.
Yes and no, okay. I just had, I had one, one net, fellas.
Okay.
At the bottom of page three, at the very bottom, there's a bullet point where we're talking about our comments and Lisa Ritchie had, I think was answering comments and it says she thought that the number could be 25. I think we probably want to go ahead and identify Lisa there.
Okay.
That was the only thing I had.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
And I want to tell you, the reason these are this way and not the normal way is that the meeting didn't get recorded at this meeting. So there were no, so what you'll get next time is the minutes with the link.
All right.
The blue link. And then people can go on that and watch the video, but there's no video of this meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Hopefully, it's taped.
Well, you did, you did a great job on the minutes, that's for sure. I was, it's pretty amazing, so. Could we have a, do we need a motion? I think we need a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
I motion.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart, any second?
Second.
Commissioner Momarts, all those in favor, so signify. Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, so the next issue, and I understand that we're gonna continue this to a date certain, but it's the public hearing and approval of a resolution recommending the approval of plan development, Plan Amendment Number Three, and review and comment on vested property rights for the Superior Town Center. Am I correct, fellas, that we're gonna move that, continue that until next, next week?
If that's what the Planning Commission wants to do, that's the recommendation. But you need to open the public hearing?
Oh, okay. Do I need to gavel it open?
Yes.
Is that how we do that? Okay, well, go ahead and open the public hearing. It's pretty official. So...
And then, unless somebody has some comments, I just say, somebody make a motion to continue this until November 17th.
Okay. I would agree with that. Does anybody want to make such a motion?
Is the commission interested in hearing maybe an update from staff on this item about continuing it?
Certainly.
Before the motion is made?
Sure, this is Stephen Williams, town staff. The only thing I guess that also clarifies is that maybe we, if we can, we only have five of us here tonight, or five of you here tonight, confirm that there'll be quorum next week before we table it to the 17th. The only other clarification I was hoping to make was that revised plan amendments have been distributed to you tonight, they were received today, so you have those to take home with you.
Okay. Anything more from staff? As far as a quorum next week, I'll be here. Is everybody gonna be able to make it?
As I know, I'll be here, I believe, so.
Yeah, sounds like we will have a quorum next week, so. You know, with that said, would we, anybody care to make a motion that we continue this until next week, the 17th?
I still move.
Commissioner Eaton, second. Commissioner Momarts, those in favor? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, next item is discussion and review regarding amendments to Chapter 16, the Land Use Code of the Superior Municipal Code Concerning Requirements for Finalizing and Recording Land Use Approvals. Do we have comments from staff on this?
Sure, I'll introduce the item. Agenda item seven's request is that Planning Commission consider clarification to Chapter 16, Article Four of the Superior Municipal Code. The existing language and proposed changes were outlined in staff's memo. At the direction of the town board, staff is seeking to clarify Sections 16-270 as well as 16-440 concerning revocation of land use approvals and permits. Specifically, staff is seeking to clarify that board approvals will expire if required documents and fees in recording and finalizing an approval is not received within 60 days. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Anybody have any questions?
It appears that what you've done is changed the wording for, from a deadline to a number of days specific, is that right?
Correct. For the first one, and the other one was for 16-440, that 60 days was in there, so it's also trying to make the two items consistent.
Other questions? Commissioner Harden?
Yes, on where it says "all signatures," I would just like a clarification of "all." Does that mean just the applicant? Does that mean the town and the recording of Boulder County, if that's applicable?
I think the intention is that it's "all signatures" so that the documents are ready to go and be recorded.
And it has to be recorded within 60 days?
Just the signatures.
Signatures.
And the doc, on the final documents.
Okay.
So that the town clerk can affect recording.
Okay, okay. I just wanted that clarified, because I wasn't sure if it's just the applicant or if it's the town as well.
Applicant and town.
Okay.
And I think it gets at the intent of making sure the documents are finalized and signed when everybody is, it's still fresh in everybody's mind what exactly was approved and not, you know, unduly burdensome on the mayor, whomever is signing to acknowledge that that was indeed the approval that was made at the meeting at which it was approved.
Okay. That answers it, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, I probably know the answer, but would this affect anything that's currently pending? I mean, are we taking, especially with respect to the, I guess, the permitting issue, is there anything pending that this would have any retroactive application to, or is this prospective only?
It's prospective only.
Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Just out of curiosity, if there's some sort of jam up in the system and trying to move something through, can they get an extension? Or are you trying to put a limit on it and live or die?
The intention is to put a limit on it. Town Board can always approve a waiver of that requirement if the circumstance warrants it.
Okay. Anything else? So this is, I think we need, this is an action item, right? So if there aren't any other questions or comments, we, I think what we need is a motion to approve a resolution of the Town of Superior Planning Commission recommending the approval of the update to Chapter 16 of the Superior Municipal Code. Anybody want to take a crack at that?
I'll still move whatever you just said. Where are you?
We are right here on the updates to 16.
If you could read that, the Planning Commission number and what's in bold at the top.
Okay, okay. Resolution number PC 3, Series 2015. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of amendments of certain sections of Chapter 16 of the Superior Municipal Code concerning requirements for finalizing and recording land use.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's, we need to press that, that's all we need. Oh.
Okay.
Were you able to get all of that, fellas?
Yeah, mine caught it. It taped it in kitchen.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Momarts, further discussion? All those in favor, so signify, I'm seeing, raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, next issue, next item on the agenda is discussion of the bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding guidelines. Does staff have a presentation?
Staff does have a presentation, I just slowed it now. So this is an effort to continue the conversation that was started in June, and I'll start by recapping what was discussed earlier this year so that we ensure we're on the same page, and I'll also update current opportunities and discuss staff's recommended paths forward, which include adopting graphic standards, establishing a sign hierarchy, and outlining a timeline for implementation. The June PC meeting defined wayfinding as encompassing all the ways people orient themselves with the physical space and navigate from place to place. It also limited our signage discussion to bicycle and pedestrian signage. That meeting included a general overview of the town's existing signs and systems and clarified that no system-wide strategy is currently in place. Signs have been installed historically on a case-by-case basis, which has resulted in some parks having signs and others not. Staff's assessment of existing signage also clarified that some links within our trails and routes are broken, so that there's no signage within certain spaces. This map, which I distributed to commissioners this evening, generally reflects the existing pedestrian bike class throughout town. It also reflects one of the ones that is currently under construction, that's in orange, that's the US 36 Bike Way. Some of the goals that were generally adopted at that June meeting include establishing clear and meaningful signs that reflect the identity of the town, also establishing graphic standards and sign hierarchies, integrating town signs with planned signs for the US 36 Bike Way and the RTD Station at McAslin, and developing group roles. In summary, those group roles were for Planning Commission to establish our destinations and for ProSTAC, and, and I didn't update that slide, sorry, it's spelled wrong, but for ProSTAC and OSAC to identify route preferences and to help with sign locations. Wayfinding priorities identified by Planning Commission in June include communicating welcomeness and ease of access to Superior, facilitating navigation for both visitors and residents, establishing cohesive town identity, highlighting destinations, and generally improving bicycle and pedestrian experiences. Some of the destination themes that were established were to sign for trails and connections, for transit connections as well, for parks and recreational opportunities, for cultural and historic locations, for civic spaces such as schools, and for retail and entertainment establishments. The remaining slides will discuss the current signage opportunities, standards that have been adopted, and illustrate some graphic options based on June's discussion. We'll also touch on next steps for the Parks and Open Space Advisory Board and when we'd like to have some guidelines in place. In addition to reviewing staff's notes from June 2013, I have also researched current, our current wayfinding needs, and staff has conducted a field study in Boulder to see how wayfinding is accomplished in a city that's known for its alternative transportation modes. Two of the three, or two of the major third-party wayfinding projects that are currently going on are the US 36 Bike Way and the McAslin RTD Project. Staff is hoping to build off of some of these projects while establishing the town's identity and clarifying the town's signage needs. And the first, if the first waves of signs do occur along the US 36 at the McAslin BRT and along the US 36 Bike Way, some of those destination priorities might be highlighting the Town Center, the Boulder Valley Ice Building, Superior Marketplace, and then neighboring parks and trails. So this are, these are the signs that were adopted for the US 36 Bike Way. The one on the left reflects a recently adopted sign for the area within Broomfield. So this is intended to kind of show what the US 36 Bike Way signs will look like. They'll have a, an identifier at the top telling you which of the junctions, so these junctions are already established. The four locations that are in Superior are, will be on Marshall Road, will be McAslin Station, Coal Creek Trail, as it comes up underneath McAslin Road. So it goes from McAslin Station to basically kind of where Brakes Plus is, sorry. And then there's also another junction at 88th Street. So it shows distances to the next junction, and then this also shows that Broomfield was able to also include some parentheticals to help identify with descriptors where you get off at one of these junctions what you can expect to find. So for them, it's kind of hard to see, but they, I think they've included their, I can't see it now either, but some of their general, I'm trying to think the name of the, the new event center that's down there, that's one of the ones, First Bank Theater, or First Bank Center is signed. But examples for Superior's junction might be the Superior Town Center, Superior Marketplace, and the Coal Creek Regional Trail. The other thing to kind of, I guess, pick up here is just the other shape of signs that they've, that they've adopted, and then how they identify their cycling or multimodal trail, trails. These examples reflect the standards that RTD has adopted for their stations. And RTD's standards also include these kiosks, as well as more pedestrian and cyclist scale signage. So the themes between those two include the blue color palette, this three colors of blue that are reflected in both signage options. It also includes the mountain silhouettes, so they're shown on both sets of signs, and then the general shape of the sign with the half moon over the center of the sign. So building off these themes is one way that the Town of Superior could establish a consistent sign type throughout Superior. Signs within the town, however, could also begin to reflect the town's identity. The option on the far left is the one that Planning Commission identified in June as being the most popular. Their feedback, or your guys' feedback from that meeting also included, hoping to include the town's logo and possibly shifting the half moon over to the left to kind of reflect the signage that we see in our current park signs. There, these are kind of the three first initial options I wanted to share with you. There are disadvantages and advantages to each. The sign on the left does not have the town logo. The center sign is probably the most busy, it includes that kind of embedded logo behind every, behind the lettering, which may make the lettering a little hard to read in some The sign on the far right does not reflect that the signage is actually for cycling or pedestrians. Staff's site visit into Boulder, however, kind of confirmed that while there are some signs that show the pedestrian, you know, a sign for somebody like crossing the street as a reflecting that pedestrians are allowed there, the majority of signs really, I think it's assumed that if you're on concrete, pedestrians are allowed. The exception is when a bike is shown, it's to identify to both pedestrians and to cyclists that it's a multimodal path. So I think we could probably limit our signage to just showing bicycles when we have a multimodal path, and that might eliminate some of the graphics that we need to, these signs to convey. The other, I guess, the other drawback to the logo that's shown here in the center is that a lot of these signs kind of get broken up, so you're gonna have a full sign when there's three spots to identify or three locations to identify, and then when it's just gonna show you that, you know, Boulder's 12, 12 miles this way if you hop on the US 36 Bike Way, we cut this sign off and you lose the logo. So here are the next kind of sets of options. I think I kind of hit into all this stuff. I think sign one offers the most flexibility in that regard, because you kind of shorten it. It also allows a little bit more space here on the right to identify between what I'd call, you know, normal Bike Way signs, and then when you get out on a trail, if you want to show like a, more of the organic path that you're gonna be taking, you know, to connect to the Mayhoffer or something like that, you can actually show the, the shape of the trail on the sign here. And then kind of building off of what I could see being a requirement that might be needed in the town center, is that you have a sign that, you know, shows that Boulder Valley Ice is a certain distance, and we don't know necessarily yet what else may be built in the town center, so we'll want to have some opportunity to add that, you know, something else was, you know, that Starbucks or something was included in the town center as well, and it's a half a mile in this direction. So you can just add these, you know, natty bands, it looks very similar to what the full sign would look like. So it just gives you a little bit more option. And then these are the two, you know, if burgundy is kind of one of the ways we identify ourselves as Superior, these are two different options we can kind of look at as whether or not we want the center to be burgundy or the exterior to be burgundy. But the other thing that staff played around with was if burgundy's gonna be the main identifier for Superior, how we could incorporate that a little bit more into our signs. We took off this lighter blue sky, and we just had this as the backdrop, and we actually kind of liked how that resulted, because it gives you more options to actually add more signage identifiers at the top, and it still gives you the option to have as much space over here. So one of the things in the graphics I was hoping to have completed but didn't get completed before tonight was just maybe showing what a town logo in white would look like at a much smaller scale in one of these corners as, as a way to incorporate that logo, still incorporate the town logo into the, the plan signs going forward. But, so should one of the graphics that we've kind of presented tonight be chosen? Staff is also requesting that we get some feedback on some hierarchy plans going forward. The Dr. Cog wayfinding study and RTD did a, so they did, the Dr. Cog study was for both RTD and for the US 36 Bike Way, and they, this is a really, really detailed analysis of, you know, where signs should be placed, how large they should be for different purposes, what overall sign sizes are and how big lettering is. So I think we could probably borrow on much of the standards that have already been established and more or less be off and running, but if Planning Commission wants additional studies being done, or if we want additional options that, you know, aren't shown here tonight, we could also discuss that. And then I think the deadlines, from what I can gather, are, you know, for ProSTAC and OSAC to actually, you know, discuss locations maybe the first of the year, and then us, hopefully, to have something adopted by the spring of 2006 in order to be ready for when RTD signage and US 36 Bike Way signage is likely to be installed. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to go back over any slides or answer any questions you guys have.
Thanks, Stephen. Anyone have any questions? I had a real simple one, just to be, just to start it off. On this, one of the last slides, I think you were showing me, I think it's Slide 19. You notice the, up in the upper left-hand corner, underneath Boulder, it has like a pedestrian and bicycle. Is, are these, does this slide depict what some of the other communities are gonna be showing on, in their wayfinding?
This, these are the standards, so these are the standards for not necessarily internal wayfinding, I guess that's one good clarification to make. So at the RTD Station, this is the signage that is allowed. I think if we had our sign, you know, guidelines in place, maybe we could push for the burgundy to be included. I'm not sure we'd get that, we haven't had that conversation with RTD yet. This is basically, you know, the parameters for installing signs on their property. Once we get off that property and, you know, we're on a trail or on a path that's technically within the town, then our, that's when our sign guidelines would be in place and we would be able to install. And we're gonna need a sign for them to, you know, to direct people to, it's kind of like this mutual thing, one of the, I guess, the easiest conversations to have on, and this is more thought than I'd given to signs thus far in my, my life, but like, you're gonna have basically two signs for every junction on US 36. So Broomfield will, would have, I think that's seven, so 14 signs, we're gonna have eight signs in each direction, and then we're probably gonna want signs like on the Coal Creek Trail that leads to the US 36 Bike Way, saying that this is how you get to the Bike Way, and then once you get to the Bike Way, you're gonna want a sign that says, you know, you go west and you're gonna find the RTD Station, that type of stuff. So there's a lot of, I mean, it's a lot of basic logic, but also a lot of thought that needs to go into where these junctions occur or where the signage occurs, but the, the study that Alex Aronello kind of coordinated for us to go and look at signage in Boulder was very helpful, just to, I mean, Boulder, I don't know that they have, I mean, we have, you know, Louisville on one extreme hiring, very comprehensive wayfinding study, and then Boulder is very pragmatic, I mean, it's just like, that's what they have to do in order to get people through their signs, but it's just, a lot of it is just something very simple showing, you know, something on the scale of the, and maybe even less, just showing that you're still on a Bike Way. A lot of it is that, and a lot of it is also, you know, once you get to a junction, then it says, if you go this way, you get to Boulder Junction, so.
I guess what jumps out at me, and maybe it's not even, it shouldn't be a valid concern, but I'll just raise it so everybody's aware, you know, when you have some signs that have both a pedestrian and a bicycle, you know, pretty obvious that it's a mixed-use trail.
Correct, yeah.
But then when you have next to that, or somewhere off from that, a sign with just a bicycle, I'm wondering if we're signaling that, you know, this is cycling only.
Right.
Don't be wandering along here with your baby stroller, that type of thing, whereas, you know, I think what we, what we want is to encourage people to walk and jog and push strollers and things like that. So I guess my two cents worth would be if we are gonna go with something like this where we show a, a bike, I would probably favor the, the two figures, just to show a mixed-use scenario.
Yeah, we could do that on those, I mean, so we will have some instances where it is just a bike route, like we'll want a sign along Coal Creek or McAslin that shows that you're on a bike route, and then you can get off on the trail, and then once you're on that trail, like you're saying, it may be better to identify that you're no longer just on a bike trail, you're on a multimodal trail, and we can do that with that.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
The only other comment that I would offer right now is that I would like to be sure, or to make sure, that we don't lose the idea that this is branding for us as well, branding for our town, and that we somehow really find a way to incorporate our logo so that it matches and fits with our other signs throughout the community. So that's gonna be really important for me, and one of the things that I'd like to see.
I'd like to make a comment. I support your comments there, Commissioner Stewart. The branding for the community, I think the last time we spoke about this back in June or July, they were, they showed us some of what Louisville was coming up with for their signage, and it was completely different, it was very unique. And so to, to brand Superior, I think what Anthony was saying was adding our logo into that sign, Stephen, like you were mentioning in the bottom-left corner.
Uh-huh.
You know, adding, adding the logo into that would, would benefit the branding of the town. You know, adding, adding the logo into that would, would, would benefit the, the branding of the town. My, my favorite one, if you go to slide sixteen. Is that sixteen? No, fifteen, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That is that one in the top middle, that's my favorite one. But it is a bit busy. And I think, uh, the comment you made, like if we had to cut the sign in half, we would cut the logo in half.
Well, I mean-
That shadow in the back.
I mean, I, I think we could work with whatever. If you guys prefer the, this kind of embedded logo, then I think if we shrunk the sign, you know, to this, then we could probably try to fit it in a much smaller scale. It depends on what you're, you know, what you guys want.
Smaller scale is a shadow in the back.
Yeah, I mean, it would still be the same, we would just wanna, I mean, and that's maybe the size of the logo that we'd be having here anyway. You know, it gets a little bit more constrained and maybe there's more options. This, this has a much, uh, taller top to it. So if we stayed with, I mean, and I don't know whether or not you're accommodating on, uh, the arc being placed over here, um, or-
No, I, I like that a lot, cause it goes along with the rest of the theme of the town.
Okay.
Yeah. When there's two off to the right, having the logo up in the, up in that bump and having Superior offset to the right.
You prefer that?
Yeah, yeah. I think in, in future uses, like if you might have to make half a sign, like you did on the second half, that the, the logo would still be intact, the sign would still serve its purpose, would still be branded all the way through.
So we, we just have to figure out a spot to show either the multimodal trail system or, uh, or a bike, uh, or both. And that's where, uh, I, I guess this one gets a little bit more tricky if we move the logo, uh, to this half moon area. It's a balance that we're trying to, I guess, achieve.
So I, I would agree with that. I do like having our logo at the top and that, uh, the signage on the far right, the top right, I do like that one a lot. And, um, maybe instead of, um, putting, um, our logo on the blue down in the smaller circle, maybe we could put the, um, multi-use trail, you know, in something like that and, and move our logo to the top.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess for what it's worth, I would vote with both of these guys. I think I, I really do prefer your far right one. It's nice, I like how you keep the mountains, the silhouette that you see in the other, in the RTD signs.
Yeah, ties that together with the, the RTD signs.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I agree, I think the one on the far right is the one I would go with. Are you, Stephen?
Yeah, because I like our logo to stand out. You wouldn't lose it otherwise.
Well, the first thing that came to my mind is, are we making a decision or are we making a recommendation?
Um, I think it's probably a recommendation on, you know, how to go forward at this point. And, uh, I think eventually this will probably need to go to, uh-
We should state that word and then, and then maybe put some pros and cons or we like this one because, as opposed to something else. When we render our decision, as it were.
Yeah, I agree.
And this is also intended to help, you know, staff go forward and, uh, flush this out, so we don't, we narrowing down our options. We'll go forward and maybe try to establish a sign hierarchy, you know, with, with these things shown, with all the elements that you're actually, so we can move forward with that. And then, um, I don't know if we'll have other options or this will just be the recommendation and see whether or not there's any concerns.
I did have one other question, um, like if you look at the one in the upper left-hand corner, you have basically three pieces of information, are they each on a, their own panel? Or is there simply a line there?
This is just a, a line to help delineate that was added.
On other, on other signs like, um, looks like sixteen. On the right, it looks like there's individual panels.
Those are, yeah, yep. That was just done so you could illustrate that if we started with a, you know, knowing that, uh, I always use the example of, you know, Boulder Valley Ice being in place within the town center. We could put a sign in, you know, tomorrow that shows Boulder Valley Ice is this distance. And then when other things develop, like a hotel or something like that, you can also sign for, for those items.
Well, the reason I ask is that, uh, it would seem that if it's individual panels that can be added or subtracted, as the case may be, that might give us the most flexibility as opposed to hypothetically having to do a whole new sign.
Correct, yeah.
And they're not cheap.
Correct, yeah. And that's why, I mean, that's why I think staff is kinda pushing for, you know, some, one of these options that, you know, you have a, kind of a break this, at the two-thirds part up and then you have this opportunity to build the sign going down. That's where that logo, uh, became kind of an issue. But if we transfer it, you know, to the top and if we limit our signage of the, the bikes and the pad up to the, you know, I guess it would be here. That's where it gets a little bit more complicated is, you know, where that's gonna go if we're looking at a sign that looks like this. But, uh, um, we'll, we'll, we'll draw it up and see what it looks like.
So would, would it be helpful then for you if we kinda try to assemble our recommendations, our collective recommendations, and then, uh, pass that on to-
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
Maybe just to start, I think one thing we're all in agreement on is that we think the town logo should be, should be displayed.
Okay.
And I think that beyond that, it sounds like maybe the majority, maybe all of us tend to favor the one on the far right in fifteen, is that? I don't wanna speak for you, Bob, I don't think you can read in on that.
Oh, I like it.
Subject to giving you the flexibility that you need by breaking, breaking up the destinations so that they could be switched out if need be. I don't know if we're gonna be putting, for instance, businesses on here, but if we do, we, you know, you could foresee a scenario where we may need to switch out the destination.
Right, and we, I mean, I guess I'm trying to think through this, we could always add, you know, these poles offer more. So you could have a sign like this and you could still have something like this underneath it that tells you, and it could be a bike route or it could have. So maybe, maybe we just have multiple signs on one post in order to achieve what we wanna achieve and still get the, not sacrifice the identity of the town. And that's how we solve not having a bike or pedestrian on, on one of these signs. So maybe this is more informational and directional and, and then we have something on this scale that, uh, tells you, you know, what, what type of, uh, path you can, or what type of mode of transportation you're allowed to use on it, so.
Yeah, that would seem to make sense to me.
Yeah. Do you guys have a preference between these colors or does it matter?
I kinda like the one on the left.
Kinda do too. Yeah, where your cursor is.
This one, okay.
Yeah. What do you think, Stewart?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's very attractive, the options you came up with are really nice.
Yeah. Good job.
Try to borrow as much of what was already adopted, and I appreciate it.
Stephen, on sixteen.
Uh-huh.
I like the idea of the separate, on the far right, of the separate bars.
Yeah.
Cause I think if we had to add, subtract, it would be much easier to do it to individual spaces rather than to paint over, whatever.
Right, yeah.
So I think, I don't know how you all feel, but I think that would be a good recommendation as well.
I agree, I think that's a smart move. Anybody have any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I agree as well, I think it's a smart move. The, uh, I was just drawing down a, a drawing, I don't know if you can see that.
Yeah.
But like, using the top section of that sign to identify the, the big thing, the, the town center, the marketplace. And then the sign riders, so to speak, underneath it, the separate ones, could list separate businesses or other attractions in that major location. You know, so the, the top hat, the top sign would identify a major location, the marketplace, the town center, uh, Purple Park, things like that.
Okay.
And then the subsequent signs that could change, uh, would identify smaller businesses, more localized businesses.
Okay.
You guys have other thoughts down there, you've been awfully quiet.
No, um, I think that's a great idea. I do like the flexibility of being able to swap out, um, panels if we need to do that as opposed to replacing an entire sign. I do like the idea of putting the mode underneath, um, in one of the, the circular, um, um, icons there, if we will. And, um, having our, I, I, I still am stuck on our town logo being prominent and being displayed and having our identity and our branding on that.
So are you saying, using, uh, using number sixteen, that, um, the bike sign would go below the panel sign?
So, so what I think I'm hearing is that we'll, we'll use something like this, uh, to identify locations. And then, uh, as Commissioner Rickert, uh, identified, we'd, uh, emphasize, you know, the major location at the top and then allow us to have this type of, uh, separation. But then also include, sorry, keep jumping back and forth, uh, this type of sign underneath on that pole in order to show, uh, identify, you know, it's a multimodal or it's just a bike trail. Did I have that wrong? Sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Malia.
Malia, sorry.
I do think we have to be careful that they don't get too busy. Cause I think if they get too busy, they're going to be confusing.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, that's, that's a good point. It's also kinda something that, uh, we started looking into, we haven't got too far with, I guess, whether or not there's a science to it all. But what I envision, I guess, is if you get off on, you know, McCaslin, you're probably gonna see, uh, you know, maybe we do, uh, circumferences or whatever to determine like, what, what can you actually get to in the next mile or mile and a half? You are either on a bike or you're on foot, so, uh, unless you're getting to, uh, the US thirty-six bikeway, I don't think a distance like twelve miles to tell you that you're gonna get into, uh, downtown Boulder that way is helpful or as useful as something that tells you, this is what you're gonna get to in the next mile or two. And then, you know, you get to the next junction, it'll sign where you're gonna get to in that next radius. So we'll look into what those radiuses should be and how far distances we should be signing. But it also, we'll see what we capture once we get to each junction. I may need to, uh, fluctuate a little bit as, you know, you get to a little bit more remote areas. Within the town center and within, uh, marketplace, I imagine it's gonna be, uh, pretty confined.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Alright, well, so I don't think we need, uh, I don't think this is an action item, but have we given you enough guidance?
No, you haven't, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the, a good presentation. Okay, so, uh, next item is the twenty sixteen work plan discussion. And this was in our packet. I'm not sure, do we have anything from staff on this?
Uh, you don't have much, you just have what the twenty fifteen work plan, uh, was. If you guys have ideas, this is really, uh, for you to think about. And, um, if you have ideas you wanna throw out, if you wanna adopt the same work plan as you had last year. I guess the only, uh, I don't know, opinion that I'd offer is that I think we're gonna have, uh, a lot more meetings, uh, in the, in the near future. I know we've had a gap, uh, since June, but, uh, we're anticipating a lot of, a lot more development applications coming through.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think this is consistent with the conversation we had when we met with the town board as a, as a commission. I think that was last spring, wasn't it? I think, uh, we all seem to agree that keeping it fairly general is probably the best course. And it seems to be consistent with our overall purpose and plan here for the commission. Anybody have anything they wanted to add or comments or questions?
I was just saying, you could add, you're gonna finalize your wayfinding recommendations. Cause we can do that after the first of the year and you think you could scratch that one off pretty quick.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. It's a good add. Any additional additions? Okay, so I don't think we need action on this, right? We're just talking about what we wanna achieve for the coming year.
Correct. It needs an, it needs an action, I guess.
Oh, it does need-
Because we, we'll take this on to the town board and they'll adopt your plan.
Okay, so we, uh, so we need a motion to approve this, the work plan. Could we have a motion subject to the addition that Fred has added that, uh, we wanna finalize our wayfinding recommendations? Alright, you've already got that, good.
As long as I can type.
Alright. Any other additions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, two thousand and sixteen work plan ideas.
Commissioner Malia, second?
Second.
Commissioner Eaton, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Alright, staff announcements and miscellaneous, do we have anything?
I don't believe I have anything. Do you have anything, Mark?
Alright, any, uh, any further business? Guess not.
Not tonight.
Meeting's adjourned.